We're going to start just on eight o'clock. I'm going to be chairing this meeting, my name is Sharon Fieldhouse. I was on the committee only for a couple of years as the planning coordinator until last November. But I take a great interest in all the planning applications that occur in that cycling provision. And I do have to admit that I personally have now retired from active cycling. But I do retain, I think, quite a bit of knowledge about how to get around the city, which is certainly different when you're on a bike, to get to all the backways and everything, the quicker ways sometimes, than when you are on a bus or car or on foot. It's my great pleasure this evening to welcome our speakers here. We're going to lead us in, which I expect will become a discussion, after they've stated their positions. Rod Cantrell over there has lived them and his patch is Munam, no doubt knows the city throughout from a cycling point of view. Then there's Herbert Lewis, Louis Herbert, sorry, I thought I said it wrong.
Guest.
From Riverside and then Abbey Ward, isn't it?
No, I'm from Coleridge, this is my friend who is from that.
Oh.
What can you...
I see. I'm Simon from Coleridge and you're representing the Green Party?
Yes.
Or independent.
No, I'm from the Green Party.
So the format of this evening is that the three speakers will have a couple of minutes to state their position about what they think about cycling facilities and I think probably the wider issue of transport generally in Cambridge nearby. It's possible that later in the evening we shall have Anthony Carpen, who is standing as Puddles the Dragon Fairy, an independent in Coleridge. And Louis is also from Coleridge.
Make sure please.
And we are going to, after the statements from the three people here, we're going to have some statements read by Hester, our branch coordinator, as that she's received from some other candidates in the local elections. And then we should have some questions, I've already been given about eight or nine questions. I doubt whether we should necessarily get through them all, but we'll see how we get on. We are very grateful for your coming this evening because it's a very busy time of the year for you in the run-up to the election, so thank you for that. Well now, who would like to start off?
You've got to start, you can go in that way.
Right, thank you. Good luck.
Okay, thank you very much and thank you for inviting me. My few comments are going to be about cycling very specifically. Cycling in Cambridge is an integral part of the city's DNA, I'm sure you're all aware of that. And the Liberal Democrat goal is to build on this, to ensure that more people take up cycling, particularly as the city grows. And this commitment, our commitment, is based on three things. Firstly, our strong track record as the ruling group of the City Council. Secondly, the projects that we're currently undertaking in relation to cycling. And thirdly, the cycling initiatives that we're proposing going forward. So what have we done? As the ruling administration, we've transformed the approach to cycling from a culture where cycling was banned in the city centre in the mid-nineties, to one where promoting cycling is an integral part of the City Council's ethos. And that's thanks in no small part to the strong voice of key stakeholders like yourselves, like the key stakeholders such as the Cycling Campaign. So what's our track record? We've delivered on large visible projects such as Makling's Cycling Provision, a key component of the local plans 2006, 2014, to the provision of a major cycle parking scheme in the Grand Arcade, to bringing Stage Three of the Tour de France to Cambridge, highlighting Cambridge as a cycling city. But we've also focused on the detail, such as using the environmental improvement funds to remove anti-cycling obstacles across the city, to using the Cycle and Walking Promotions grant pot to support cycling-related projects of all shapes and forms. But there is still more to do, so what are we currently doing? We're undertaking a major investment in cycle racks in the city centre, you may have seen some, that will provide over 600 new rack spaces. We're rolling out the 20 mile per hour zones across the city, making the roads safer, particularly for cyclists. And we're supporting and promoting with other stakeholders the delivery of the Chisholm Trail as an urgent priority. In addition to this, in the future, we'll extend the investment in cycling racks to local community centres as part of our ambitious plans for reinvigorating local community centres. We will continue to, we will continue the process of rolling out two-way cycling on one-way streets. And we will keep Cambridge moving by using the Keep Cambridge Moving Fund to specifically promote cycling-related projects. I started by saying that cycling is in the city's DNA. The Lib Dem goal is to ensure that it remains so, not only today but also in the future. Thank you.
Very much. Would you like to add your word, Clive?
Yeah, thank you. So I'm Louis, so I'll lead the latest group and I'm also the councillor for Coleridge. And in conjunction with Noel Cadner, who's also here, we've strengthened and developed our policies on cycling. The big issue for the future is the City Deal, in that within that there's an initial £100 million for the next five years. But it also has the opportunity to draw in other funds. I mean, essentially the City Deal has got commitments subject to achieving the £500 million. Now, the big opportunity, particularly in the first five years, is that that first £100 million is about schemes that can be started now or schemes that can be put together. So as has been stated, there is a commitment from both parties to the Chisholm Trail and a couple of those earlier schemes that still require a little bit of work. But obviously, there's the issue of linking the Science Park Station across to the east of the city. There's also issues about making cycling far more permeable under Mill Road and also around the station. The ward I'm in, Coleridge, will over the next 10 or 20 years be completely interconnected with the station at the moment if it isn't. So the opportunities there, I think, I reiterate some of what Rod has said. The partnership is the mismatch, if you like to call it that, of councils in that the county still is the transport authority, albeit that the city has a huge say. The people who've got expertise, including the Cycling Campaign, but also the broader community. We need to take with us pedestrians, we need to take people who have problems of mobility, the disabled. We need to, we've got an imperative, we have to shift the percentage of journeys in this city out of cars and vehicles. One of the issues which we will champion and develop is there hasn't been a proper city centre transport strategy for 20 years. We still have a sat nav-dominated ring road that routes a huge amount of traffic and HGVs through a city that doesn't need them. So I'm not going to come here tonight promising suddenly to put one-way systems and change that ring road. But just as the core scheme altered the balance in favour of cycling and pedestrians, the next stage in terms of major decisions for this city, in terms of impact, is that ring road. And just basically altering it and transfiguring it as space for pedestrians and for cyclists. But it'll have to be done in consultation. In the same way that the support that was given by the political parties for 20 mile an hour still depends on there being support for that. And just on 20 mile an hour, we've got it, but we still have enforcement, education and engineering. And we still have issues that are unresolved. So we cannot just have a scheme where people do 30 or 35 in 20s. Clearly it will reduce the speed compared to how people have been driving in 30 mile an hour zones. So there has been a good commitment from the City Council. It has been backed by Labour in the 10 years that I've been on the council. And there will be an enthusiastic forwarding of initiatives. The council doesn't have huge resources, but there is significant resource for cycling. And it has to be done in partnership. I could talk on, I could talk about the floating bus stops and other things, but I think we'll come on to those questions.
Thank you very much. Simon, would you like to add your words?
There's a sort of danger in this sort of event. We've come to sort of a bit of a love fest because no party is actually going to send people over here to say, sod the cyclists, you're a pain in the butt, and take you there. So in some senses, we're all going to be very consensual about some of the good things that have been happening and some of the good things which are promised. And I worry about the promising of this. Because my worry is the fact that councils don't stand up to the people who actually don't like cyclists very much at all or feel that money that is spent on cycling could actually be better spent elsewhere. To take a few examples, I would very, very much like county, city, whoever is actually delivering the funds, to actually look at potholes and say, actually, this isn't very important as far as the motorists is concerned, but it's bloody important if it's a cyclist at night. And somehow that seems to get left behind, somehow it's at the bottom of the pile. I'd also like people to actually take on the engineers. When we're dealing with traffic engineers, we're still dealing with people who by and large have a four-wheel mindset, you know, two wheels, good, four wheels, better. And they need to be taken on, rather than squeezing cyclists around and saying, we're doing all our commitments, this is a cycle city, but by and large when you get to a nasty junction, well, you know, we've got to keep the traffic flowing, rather than saying, actually, no, you've got to think about it in a completely different way. Councillors on hell don't do that. The other thing they don't do is the moment they get half a dozen emails from motorists complaining about something, the poor darling's panicked. They don't think this is just six people and there's huge numbers of people who like what we're doing. They tend to say, oh, it's the tip of the iceberg, oh god, we've got to row back on all of this. These are the things that one really wants to have happen. If we're going to be serious about transport planning in this city, if we're going to be serious particularly about cycling, actually the politicians have to start getting beastly to motorists, beastly to developers, and actually being considerably more robust than they have been in the past. Why have we got car-free developments in this city? It's been suggested in the centre, it hasn't happened, but why not? Because it's all very well pointing, oh, they're getting lots more cycle parking communities in as well, whoopee doo. But if we want something really serious, we have to completely change the mindset. I think that means that the politicians actually have to start being more robust, much stronger, and actually take on the lobbies, which I regret to say, saving blushes for my friends here, that they tend to actually run a little bit scared of, particularly when it comes up to elections in a city like this, where we actually had elections every year. That means that people are quite often running scared far too often. And that's not the way to plan an onward strategy. My view of the world is if you actually do something that apparently is incredibly unpopular, the electorate kind of forget it remarkably quickly, get used to it, and you've actually achieved something fairly fundamental. And that's what I would like to see happening, particularly with cycling, but also with other parts of the transport infrastructure.
Thank you very much, Simon. Shall Hester be glad to read some statements you've received?
Firstly, apologies from the Conservatives. They've got an important exec meeting this evening and we're unable to send anyone because of the clash. But I've got a statement here from Nick Clark on behalf of the Conservatives. I recognise that cycling is an important citywide issue and opportunity. Rest assured, Cambridge City Conservatives are fully supportive of improving facilities for cycling and see cycling as an excellent way of relieving congestion and fully support separating different modes of transport so that all may thrive. I'm expecting to review and formulate a number of existing policy papers on a range of subjects in the coming months, and I will ensure cycling is one of them. Also got any statement from Marie Louise Holland, who's standing as independent in Castle. I've lived in Castle Ward for approximately 15 years and served as a City Councillor in 2004 to 2008. I was elected on Lib Dem ticket and decided to become an independent as I was not comfortable with the tribal gang mentality of party politics I witnessed. A decade later, and I, like many local residents in Castle Ward, who elected councillor John Hipkin to the Cambridge City Council in 2012 and the county in 2013, have seen how effective a conscientious independent can be. You don't have to be with a political party to ask questions, challenge, scrutinise, and ultimately communicate with your electors. This evening you want to hear about cycling. My first encounter with Cambridge Cycling Campaign was around 2004, when I made representations to the Guided Busway Inquiry about the impact of the on-road bus along Hisston Road. I was impressed to read the representations made by Cambridge Cycling Campaign at the time and the level of technical detail, it is surface of the cycle paths. I'm convinced the representations made by the Cambridge Cycling Campaign at the time were instrumental in improving a provision for cycling and ultimately to the improved cycle paths that are now being implemented. I use the section on King's Heades Road towards the Cambridge Regional College every few weeks. I cycle in Cambridge most days as I know that I will arrive at my destination promptly. My doctor and I share a tandem made in Oakington. We generally avoid cycling through the city centre and stick to cycle routes away from vehicular traffic. I'm not in the city centre much these days and I find the mix of pedestrians, cyclists, delivery vehicles, buses and taxis hellish at times. I've witnessed pedestrians being hit by cyclists and cyclists being swiped by bus wing mirrors. I've seen cars late at night swinging to cycle lanes for a bit of amusement to the passengers. I admit to being stopped on Grange Road a few years ago at dusk without lights. Admittedly, I was a little fed up as I had gone out for an evening cycle to clear my head and then found myself being flagged down. However, the scheme of getting people to buy lights well and be fined is good. In my ideal Cambridge, what would I like to see? I'd like to see greater use of park-and-ride sites in an attempt to reduce cars coming into the city and causing congestion and pollution. As I mentioned earlier, the mixture of transport modes in the city centre is chaotic. We need smaller buses in the historic core to enable pedestrians and cyclists to navigate the streets more easily. I would prefer to see minibus operating in the city centre rather than taxis carrying one or two passengers. I'm aware of three major cycling schemes presently being consulted on, Hills Road, Huntingdon Road in Castle Ward and Trumperton Road. It will be interesting to see the results of the consultation and how safer cycling and better air quality can be achieved for us all. The Cambridge Cycling Campaign are raising and forming the cycling community about such consultations. And it is only by engaging and participating in such consultations that the voices are heard. Thank you for offering the opportunity of contributing to the discussion this evening, and I'm happy to follow up on any of these thoughts should I be elected on the 22nd of May. And the final statement is from Ian Tyres, an independent candidate in King's Hedges. I have lived in King's Hedges for more than 30 years. I'm a keen cyclist around the city, but also drive normally when travelling out of Cambridge, very occasionally walk or use the bus, to remove the transport chaos in the city from a number of sides. I've also visited other places in the UK and elsewhere in the world and have noticed the different ways that different places tackle the same problem, how to balance competing modes of transport in limited space and on a tight budget. What Cambridge has not had, and if elected I would promise as a priority, is an integrated transport policy, not just for the city but for the commuter belt of Necker's villages as well. Cambridge also does not have a joined-up approach to cycle paths, and again, this would be a priority for me as part of the overall plan. The Chisholm Trail is one strand which I fully support, and if the £1 billion City Deal money does anything, it must prioritise purchasing or safeguarding stretch demand composing the Chisholm Trail. This alone is insufficient and in the long term, other linked-up cycle routes across Cambridge, following the routes that most people use, must be worked out and secured. In a short time, we are stuck with daft ideas like misguided bus 20 mile per hour speed limits, shared-use footpaths, faded or non-existent markings, appallingly designed junctions, congestion charge and no joined-up thinking. I would not have wasted half a million pounds on the 20 mile per hour scheme. That money could have been put to far better use. If elected, I would propose a short-term measures of creating a cyclist-only box at the front of the queues with each set of traffic lights, white lines on all shared-use footpaths indicating which side pedestrians and cyclists, cyclist censors on traffic control traffic lights, and more left-turn lanes at junctions bypassing lights altogether. But I would rather find a way for our crowded densely packed city of cycle-only paths away from the roads and most pedestrians, allowing a safe, fast, reliable, well-lit, well-maintained, cross-free route across the city for the majority of regular cyclists. And there's all those statements I've received.
Thank you. Well, I've received a number of questions and I was going to say I'm not going to put them in any particular order, but picking up one of the points in the last statement about the 20 miles per hour, I'm not liking it, I have here a question about that. And it says, how will you approach local police priority setting? How do you want the 20 mile per hour limits enforced? Actually, I think they are being enforced on Arby Road at the moment, as said in the newspaper. Anybody would like to respond to whether you would actually see more enforcement or not?
Well, I think the, I mean, the way I start it, I'm going to sort of zoom down from the motorways. The motorway is 70 miles an hour, intervention speed 85, behaviour between 70 and 90. 30 mile an hour zones, behaviour between 25 and 45. The nature of a 20 mile an hour zone is that unless it is, unless there is a level of significant enforcement, then it isn't going to settle down to anything close to 20 or 22. It's going to be in that zone between 20 and 30 miles an hour. So I can't, I think, if we look at the way it's been done in a couple of other cities, there's been a better partnership before it's been started. And I think some of the foundations are slightly weak. And I think the council and the county council need to work together to actually strengthen some aspects. The police have partly not come to the party because they weren't part of making the original decision. And there needs to be some retrofit to get the change. Unless there's an element of enforcement and also some element of looking at the engineering and the signing, we're not there to educate people. Arguably, the current repeater and nature of the signing doesn't get into people's faces as drivers. They're relatively small signs, it's zonal. And even if some of the extra signing and the education may only be temporary, it may not need to be there forever. The fabric isn't quite enough to achieve its objective at the moment.
Thank you.
I would say that, I would echo some of the points that Louis has said in terms of enforcement and education, but I take a slightly different view in terms of enforcement. And I think if you look at what the Police Commissioner said, and he's said this on a number of occasions, particularly at West Central, one of the West Central area committee meetings, where he fully supports 20 mile per hour zones within the city. And he indicated that he was committed to making sure that his officers would enforce it. And that's a statement from somebody who sits there at the top of the police in terms of managing that resource. And I think one of the challenges is to ensure that that position basically filters its way down within the police structure. And we've seen this on some of the other issues within the city, where actually that communication structure, partially because of a lot of restructuring that's taken place in the last 12 to 24 months, it hasn't got down to the guys on the ground. So when you have the guys on the ground sitting in area committees, they are somewhat nervous about committing to enforcing 20 miles per hour. I think we need to make sure that the police are fully behind that enforcement because it is a mixture of enforcement and education. We can tweak the tools we use for education, but actually people will only abide by the 20 hours if there is a period of sustained enforcement. And it's in the interests of all road users, it's in the interest of cyclists, it's in the interest of pedestrians, but also it's in the interest of motorists. Because it enables the road environment to change materially. And we've seen that in other cities where it's been very successful.
Thank you.
I think one of the most important things with regard to enforcement, and it's not just about 20 miles now, it's about quite a lot of other things which jeopardise road users' use of mobiles or whatever else, is that the politicians, particularly through the area committees, where they have a direct interface with the police, actually need to make this a priority. One of the problems about area committees in my experience is that they're attended by rather small numbers of members of the public, some of whom could be regarded as the usual suspects, and can sometimes have very, very small, particular beefs. And a committee can then suddenly say that that's going to be a priority as far as the police are concerned. And the police have the limited resources. So what one really needs is for the council as a whole to say, actually, the enforcement of the 20 mile an hour limit is our absolute top priority. It really is very, very important. And to actually make sure that that happens rather than actually being sort of bypassed and saying, oh gosh, well, we've suddenly got this little outbreak of antisocial behaviour or we've got this, that or the other. Because it actually needs to be done consistently. It doesn't need to be done consistently, I suspect, for more than about 18 months. But if it was, it would actually then be built into the way people think about driving around the city. And then we'd actually be on our way. But it does need an act of political will. And again, people to think about statistics, to think about where the best use of resources are, rather than jumping to some sort of putative emergency that people have come up sort of as and when because they have seen, I don't know, somebody supposedly peddling drugs under Mill Road Bridge or, you know, sort of being beastly to somebody somewhere. You actually need to take the long view. And I think that's something that the City Council can actually very well do.
Thank you. And now, my instructions were that the sort of general discussion would be held after we'd had the questions. But I think that is perhaps a little bit difficult because by the time you get to question six, you've forgotten a point that you wanted to bring up in question one. So I propose that we have a couple of minutes or so for discussion on this and our experience. Clive, you have experience of the North Area Committee, as I do, and what has been happening there. Because where North Area is the first area to be introducing the 20 miles per hour. And I personally was quite impressed that the police have really made Arby Road a priority for enforcement so early on in the scheme. Has anyone else got any comments?
Yes, well, not just the North Area Committee, but also as a cyclist in the North Area and on the 20 mile an hour roads, like Arby Road for example. I just, I spoke outside in the morning in Oldenborough on a road which is in many ways comparable to Sherre Hinton Road. Now, shared-use patterns because there's not enough space and quite a lot of traffic. And I've decided to reduce the speed limit to 30 kilometers an hour, so 20 miles an hour, and have put up signs to entice cyclists onto the main carriage way, but still allow the shared use for all the schoolchildren, little ones or people who go slowly and don't feel safe. But cycling there, I noticed, when I cycled in the 20 mile an hour zone in Cambridge, the cars catch up pretty quickly, which always surprises me. I was cycling there on an old Dutch bike and I heard a car coming, I thought, oh, should I move on the way a bit? But the car never came any closer because he was really going at 30 kilometers an hour. And the difference, I think, is just moving enforcement, not open fixed enforcement announced, as is, I think, the only way we can do it here. But having hidden enforcement cameras which suddenly move from one street to the other, is there any scope for that? What would you do?
Do you want any more cameras in the city?
Well, moving, which is not... At West Central, we've had this issue of 20 miles an hour because the residents' associations on May's Courseway, before we rolled out the citywide proposals, have been very vocal in trying to get the police to look at 20 miles an hour in terms of May's Courseway. And this issue of the police having to have high-vib jackets and so forth is quite an issue. I agree, I'm not, I don't know the specifics in terms of the regulations, but it does defeat the objective because the motorists just reduces the speed where they see the high-vib jacket and then revert back to normal once they've gone past the police officer's enforcement. There needs to be a better solution basically on the enforcement if that is the case.
Thank you. James, you had a question.
Yes, and it seems to me that what we need is a kind of speed camera that they have on motorways, particularly where they're repairing the motorways, which are totally automatic, which don't involve police, which are based on number plate recognition. And if you exceed the speed limit by more than a certain amount, you get a letter through the post which is automatically generated. And the motorway system is based on average speed over a distance and you can't slow down just for the camera. Unless you slow down for a length, you're likely to get a ticket. Now, the motorway system does actually work, and that's what we need within the city. Now, you might think that would be very expensive. No, it's not. The reason is that those cameras are radio-operated. Then you don't have to install, put any cables in. They're actually cheaper than the old cable cameras, and that's what we need. What's your reaction to that?
I think my problem is I'm not an expert on road transport regulations. And all I know is that there's just a huge morass of rules. In this city, we have speed cameras which don't even get turned around. They just stay there at a certain position, looking down a certain road. And they don't, no one even comes around to swivel them, simply to create a different sense of fear or different sense of enforcement. So, I mean, I think, it's quite clear. I know from my own driving behaviour, which of course is generally exemplary, that on motorways, that completely changes, the A fourteen has completely changed people's behaviour on that road, or largely. So, yes, if we could do some average speed cameras along some of the larger roads, Cherry Hinton becomes a twenty mile an hour zone, Arby is a twenty mile an hour zone. There's a discussion, I don't know when North Area Committee is about Victoria Road. I think average speed is the right approach. I have some fondness, albeit that it doesn't enforce, for some of the village schemes whereby you actually try and do education by actually showing people, look, you are in a twenty mile an hour zone and you're currently doing twenty-eight miles an hour. So you get that, personally, I am attracted to those kind of schemes, like in Harston. I think some of that with some intensity, it enables the people who then decide to travel at twenty mile an hour zone to put up with the lunatic behind them who's sort of basically screaming at them from behind to try and make them speed up. Ultimately, the twenty mile an hour zone, particularly on the busier roads, will be enforced by the drivers and the cyclists being bold enough to take more space on the road. So I think, if we can get some of those measures changed, great. I would also like to see some intervention measures. It hasn't been, I haven't fully understood these particular signs that fascinated the Cambridge news about controlling dog fowling by having a series of eyes at knee height on lampposts. But I'm told it works. I'm not saying that I'm some kind of lunatic looking for non-speed camera routes for enforcing the twenty mile an hour zone. But I, and I've only driven a little bit or cycled a bit in the North Area. I just don't, I don't see the impact of what is on the streetscape now. I don't want to have clutter, but I just don't see that there is enough of a statement on the streets so far to achieve the culture change. We do, as a party, want to see a rebalancing between rights on a couple of issues in this city. And driving behaviour is one of them. But how can you have sufficient police resources between the hours of six and twelve every evening, of every night, given the kind of driver behaviour which we all know goes on when it starts to get dark? I don't think we've got enough police resource unless we get other measures as part of a culture change.
Average speed cameras are automatic.
No, excuse me, Monica, you had a second question.
It was a, it's a comment. Yes, it's, to my mind, what we need to be getting, and I don't know how we get it, is a change in the culture of drivers so they don't automatically assume that they have the right to drive as fast as they think is safe regardless of the speed limits. I think the fact that there are so many sat nav devices that warn you of speed cameras indicates a lack of willingness to accept that there are speed limits as such at all. And what I would much prefer to see is education aimed at persuading drivers that twenty miles an hour is a perfectly reasonable speed in built-up areas, the residential areas and the city centre. I'm quite convinced that most of the drivers zooming along Downing Street and Pembroke Street are not doing the twenty mile an hour that they're supposed to. It certainly doesn't feel as if they're doing twenty-five miles an hour when they're coming towards me in the conflict flow side of the lane. And I'm just wondering how we bring, what we can do to bring about the change of culture that accepts that, you know, twenty mile an hour is a reasonable speed, that it's nothing wrong with being in third gear rather than top gear. You know, when I learnt to drive many, many moons ago, the assumption was you get into the top gear as quickly as you can. My feeling now is that if you're in town, third gear's perfectly acceptable. And that should be somehow taught.
Rod, did you want to...
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think that in order, in order for the twenty mile an hour scheme to work effectively, there just needs to be that step change, both in terms of enforcement and education. And interestingly, those average speed enforcement cameras aren't just on motorways. If you go to Nottinghamshire, they're on forty mile an hour roads, single, single, single-lane roads, and they work really effectively. Because they force the driver not just to slow down when there is a single camera, but the whole journey. And so if you travel on a lot of the roads in Nottinghamshire, Nottinghamshire County Council have been very successful in introducing those schemes outside of the, of the main city areas. And I think there is a role on certain roads within Cambridge for that type of enforcement. And I think that would help in terms of a step change of visibility of the scheme with motorists so that on other roads, such as Downing Street and so forth, they do have that sense of driving at that speed. And then link that with education clearly is a key component. And I think if you do that for a sustained period of a year or two years, hopefully that will get into the psychology of the motorists.
Simon, you wanted to tell us.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting that Rod mentioned Nottingham because one of the things I think we're rather bad at in local government in general, but I think Cambridgeshire has not been at the forefront of doing it the right way, is actually best practice. Is actually, you know, we're not exactly unique in the problems that we face in terms of traffic. We're not unique in trying to have a twenty mile an hour limit. Everybody else is trying to do it at the same time. And what we really need to do, I think, is to learn far more from other authorities, not just in this country, but of course from abroad. Because if you look at the design of streets and how that encourages people to keep to the rules without actually feeling that they're sort of kind of being travelled on by some sort of kind of great sort of nasty god in the sky, we could do actually rather well. And I think we need to do an awful lot of learning and to try and get best practice in and accept that it's not going to work in its entirety. There will always be five percent of looies, probably, I do wish to spare a type, young men in red cars who will actually break the speed limits. And every now and again, some copper will cop them and, you know, they'll be fined. But they will always be there. What we want is the mass of motorists to be kind of keeping to the rule. And I think there are an awful lot of things we can learn from outside, from other authorities in this country, but from abroad, how we design our street, how we enforce, how we educate. And I think we're really, really bad about actually going out and saying, we don't know what we're doing, can you help? And I think that's what we ought to be doing.
Thank you. I'd prefer to say one more comment on this. John, did you have one?
Yeah, I just, I just really feel strongly that the police do not want to catch people. They would not publicise, they would not fix their testing, they would not wear high-visibility jackets unless they only wanted to catch fools. And that also wastes police time because basically they stand there, everyone slows down for them, they say, no one's speeding. So it actually creates a, the fact that they publicise it makes it easy for them not to catch people. So James is completely right, it needs to be automated and it needs to be constant, twenty-four hours a day. It doesn't need to involve manpower. And only that way will we see what we want. Because after all, the motorway, James's motorway speed cameras are there for the safety of the workers on the motorway. And that's the same, we want safety for the pedestrians and cyclists and other users in Cambridge. And that's all that I have for...
Thank you. Well, maybe the funding from that might come in connection with this next question, which is a rather broader. With the city deal, what proportion of money should be spent on cycling to fix dangerous junctions and routes? The dangerous junctions, well, there's one in Purn Road, Radigan Road, that I believe is being worked on at the moment. And one that the cycling campaign have been looking at is in Trumpington Road, Brooklands Avenue, that area, and the others as well. So would you like some of the money spent of this city deal to be spent on fixing dangerous junctions and routes?
So I, I mean, well firstly, our position is the first chunk of money out of the city deal goes towards the Chisum Trail. That's our key priority, we've come out and said that. It's critical for the cycling infrastructure in the city. We believe it will be a material step change in terms of people cycling, not only existing cyclists, but actually increasing the percentage of non-cyclists who will cycle. So that's the first point. In relation to additional money coming out of there, yeah, I'm very keen to see those types of junctions addressed. There are other pots of money that at the moment are addressing some of those junctions. So for example, the government's pots of money to look at the cycle, the cycle route along Trumpington Road between the Botanical Garden and Brooklands Avenue may go some way to adjust that. But I think the more we can do to alleviate issues around junctions so it increases the smooth flowing for cyclists and pedestrians, it will again encourage people to take up cycling, and that should be our key goal, to get more people on to bikes.
Thank you.
The, I mean, the quantum is that the county council's estimated that, it was put together a list of schemes totaling about a billion. And that includes fairly flexible amounts for cycling schemes. The, as I mentioned, the guaranteed money is a hundred million. And whilst not wanting to diminish the city council doing something with a fund, that's the big money. And if you just start by saying, well, what would we do with the first twenty percent? And looked at twenty million pounds for cycling projects in the city, it's essentially going to be looked in at two-year chunks. So it's what's going to happen in fifteen to seventeen, what's going to happen in seventeen to nineteen. We want to see the Chisum Trail developed, we want to see other cycle routes. But we know that life doesn't always work to plan in that you hit stags and some schemes move quicker than others. If the Chisum Trail doesn't, you can't magic the whole trail in one project. It's going to be partly built and it will be linked together. But there'll be, yeah, there has to be a major look at junctions. The feedback messages on the Cambridge news are always quite amusing from the anti-cyclists. But if you look at the Catholic Church Junction, I mean, it doesn't look to be a hugely well-managed project, but it's got a good outcome. The Purn Road, Radigan Road, Dutch style roundabout will improve. But if, basically, I think if you just looked at every junction on the roads which are the, sorry, I'm not an expert, but are effectively the B roads through the city, every one of those junctions needs to be sorted out. Simon did make a good point about potholes. Effectively, and again, I'm not the expert, it does need to be a zone, effectively a berm area which is specially looked after and improved for cycling along the side of each road. I cycle regularly up and down Hills Road and Regent Street, and it has improved, but it's still substandard. And just crappy county council surface dressing has reduced Cherry Hinton Road to really an uncyclable road until it's properly serviced. So I think that some of them, there has to be a look at all of the junctions. I come back to the principle that we really have to look at the inner ring road hard. It does not need, in my judgement, and I'm only speaking with a personal view, it does not need to be a road that people can go around in a ring. It is a, it is a part of getting in and out of the city. And it has to be altered in its spaces and in its use so that it isn't dominated by continuous queues of lorries and cars. So I'm sure the cycling campaign will come up with plenty of proposals. And we don't also think that the way that the money, I mean, it's great that we've secured this money and the money is really useful, but a hundred million pounds in the next five years could be gobbled up very quickly. And we really do have to look through how we're going to look at transport. Because we cannot forget that a lot of the disaster in terms of the amount of cars coming to this city is the complete failure of there being a public transport network to Camborne or to Bourne or to some of the others' new settlements. So it isn't as if cycling can say, right, we can spend a billion. It has to be the opportunity for cycling to get in early because cycling can deliver schemes in the next five years. But we will also need to have major linkages to expensive parking rides, which won't just cost one and a half million, they'll cost five or seven million. Plus, they will have to be integrated with off-road and other routes for both cycles and buses to get into the city. So it's a large programme, and the county council started it off. But we have to, I'm sure the city council will come up with its list and the cycling campaign will come up with its list. And we have to have, yeah, start with looking at where's the first twenty million.
I earned a slightly unenviable reputation for being a religious Cassandra by always saying that things would take twice as long and cost twice as much as was originally predicted. This was almost invariably the truth. And I think the same goes...
You're responsible for the guided bus.
Oh, contraire, oh, contraire. And I would say the same about money that is proffered by the government. Don't bank on it coming. It seems to me that although one can have visions for the future and keep the pressure on, I mean, it doesn't matter whether it's the Chisum Trail or whether it's junctions or whatever else, we can all agree that these are good things. If one's being realistic, it is incredibly important to keep up the pressure on what can be done in a small scale in the next financial year and the financial year after that. That will actually enhance the way in which cycling takes place in this city. Because I'm really very, very sceptical about some of these long-term plans. It would be lovely if they came about. But, you know, all my experience suggests that some of them will, some of them won't. They all take longer, money will run out, money will be diverted, money won't actually happen. And what we want is that small-scale incremental improvement to actually what we're trying to do. I know that's a bit pessimistic, and I don't want to dampen down on what could possibly, in the best of all possible worlds, become something really good. But I'm, in my guts, you know, I have been disappointed so often over the years of these things happening that I can't believe that I won't be disappointed again.
Thank you. Robin, you have a question?
So my experience of trying to get better infrastructure is the council's got a pot of money, it has to be sent within two years, and you cannot design a safe junction within two years. I don't think a two-year lifetime on any money for that would be appropriate. You couldn't build an E D bypass in two years, you couldn't build an A fourteen within two years, you couldn't build a guided busway in two years. So why are we trying to build safe cycling infrastructure in only two years? I would like to see a pot of money that is a significant sum of money, twenty pounds per head, that is allocated to cycling from funds, that is going to be spent on cycling with a five- or ten-year lifetime. Would you support that?
I would support that, actually. I think there are two points. One is that you have to get the balance right. Because if the money's there forever, right, as in like the pots goes for ten, fifteen years, you'll never get the scheme until ten, fifteen years. So there has to be a balance between delivering, making sure the scheme gets delivered, and also having the pot of money available. But I think we have a one-off opportunity. Because in the next five to ten years, we're going to have a lot of new residents in your city, new communities on the urban fringes. And this is a one-off opportunity where we can change the game completely and get those people on bikes and cycling. And to do that, you need to be serious about the infrastructure. And it's, look, I think on a day-to-day basis, fixing some of these junctions is very important. But it's actually a step change that you need. And some of the key cycling infrastructure that you folks have talked about for a long while and have been trying to encourage us to put in place... and have been trying to encourage us to put in place is the type of stuff that we need to be thinking about. Because that will basically move the percentage of people who are on bikes from that thirty per cent who cycle to work every day up to the forty and the fifty. And it's those new people coming to the city who we want to encourage to take up cycling. So I would support that, I'd support a longer term. Now, you know, I'm sure, as Lewis will say, we sit within the constraints of what we are given from national government. But I think we should certainly lobby for a longer period of time so that the money's spent sensibly on those key infrastructure projects.
There's no imperative to spend the money this year or next year. I mean, the base fund is a hundred million pounds over five years. A lot of the more complicated schemes, like the busways or different notions and projects, will take even longer to develop. I do think that there's an opportunity in the next two to four years for a significant number of innovative and quality schemes in the city. One of the horrible words is "over ready". Clearly, none of these schemes are over ready, and they will take time. But the level of funding that's available is bigger than the twenty pounds saved per head of Cambridge residents. I mean, I think there is within that hundred million, about twenty million pounds. And I'm not saying that that's a guarantee, but I think if you look at that as a sum and say how you do it, and it will be, it should not be spent on second-rate priorities, and it's a question of identifying the priorities. But it will be in part incremental because you can't have eighteen junctions being worked on anywhere. And whilst there clearly is rightly an ambition to build the whole Chisen Trail, there are sections of it that are greater priorities, and there are sections of it which will come first. So I think, come forward with the projects, be part of the dialogue. The county council is now a different kind of organisation, partly because it isn't completely dominated by a single party in the way it was. It isn't perfect, life isn't perfect. But the partnership opportunity is there between the community, the councils, and groups that have got special expertise.
I think, and I'm an optimist, aren't you, Simon? Yes, I think that is. I mean, I think everybody's made some quite sensible comments on this. Because one of the real demerits of politics in this country, whether we're talking about what we're here to talk about tonight or whether we're talking about bigger issues like health or social care or whatever else, is that politicians tend not to have more than a five-year span of attention. And an awful lot of the things we're talking about actually need to have a ten, a fifteen, twenty, thirty-year span of attention. What needs to happen, and you can see it here tonight, is that if you look at the three of us, actually, we don't disagree in terms of cycling about a huge amount of stuff. There's a large degree of consensus, which actually means that everybody can work together and possibly bring something about. The problem is that every April, everybody goes slightly bonkers and starts saying sort of seven shades of shit about each other, and then has to sort of get kind of back on track. And it would be quite nice if we actually had a way in which we could actually work on some of the things. We're always going to disagree about some things, but on a consensual basis, without thinking about the electoral cycle, and I think that would be very healthy. It would be extremely healthy, particularly with regard to the county council, where I recently served my time, I now have remission for good conduct, I gather. So I mean, that's the sort of thing that actually people like you need to put pressure on the politicians to say, "Look, you actually do agree on most of these things, you agree with us because we're the experts. Would you now please get on with it?", and perhaps have a non-aggression effect about the things that we really do agree about in election periods, rather than sort of sitting there telling fiddles about each other, which I regret to say is what's happening at the moment.
I have a question from the floor, Martin.
Yes, I actually slightly disagree with Robin about this issue for two years. And I think we can do it with these junctions, I mean, the Dutch would have been doing it in a year if that. I think what's really important, particularly with these major junctions, roundabouts, I think particularly the inner ring road, which I'm delighted to hear Lewis raises, is the need really for, to get on straight away with the study to actually say, "How can we make these safer?" Whenever we've raised any of the particular junctions like the Catholic Church or the East Ray one with the county, it's always, "Well, we can't do this one because it has effects on the others." And so, you know, so it's a kind of chicken and egg situation here. We need to look at the whole thing, and a good example of that is the Newmarket Road roundabout and the East Road, sorry, the Eastern Gates development plan. And I'm certainly quite concerned that nothing seems to be happening with that. We agreed two years ago, there's masses of development happening there, and yet, I mean, is there a danger in a year's time all the development will happen and the money will have been twisted away? The other thing I just wanted to flag up in connection with this part of the discussion is, I'm delighted with what Lewis said about the main roads and the need to sort of, I think, concentrate on those. We'd very much like to see the kind of thing that's illustrated on this fantastic new guy that we've created, proper dedicated space for cycling. If you think about things like Newmarket Road, it's a pretty wide road. It's full of lots of ballards and bits of concrete all over the place. There's plenty of space for this kind of thing. And this is the kind of show that we get a lot more people cycling and facilitating new developments. So I just welcome comments on those sort of things.
Well, I'd ask guests a comment on that. I'd like to take another question from the floor, you've been waiting.
It's to you, Madam Chair. Would it be possible, when you've put the initial questions to the candidates, what to limit them in time? Because they think it's a waffle. And we're not getting a lot of questions.
Right, we need some more questions. With that prompt, I think I'll go on to the next question then. The next question actually is also to do with money. Two years ago, the city council scrapped its full-time cycling officer post. We argue the cycling campaign against this as it is an important position for securing planning applications. Will you reinstate this position when you get back onto the council? Cycling officer post.
I think the facts are, the resources haven't changed. It was a reprofiling of the resources. The resources are still there, and actually what you've seen in the last twelve to eighteen months. And, you know, your representative sits on the Pedestrians Cycling Committee, and you see those officers come together on that committee, and we still have cycling officers representing the city and officers representing the county council. And I don't see any change personally in terms of the commitment that the city council has and the effectiveness that the city council has in terms of delivering cycling policy.
Thank you.
Well, we know that the half-time city officers are doing a great job on some of the projects, including Purn Road, Radigan Road, and some of those other projects. I think we've got to just look at what the resource is and particularly look at the major developments. Because I think the cycling campaign has taken on quite a burden of actually doing some of the city council's job on some of those developments. So I think that's the area. I think I'd probably be just looking particularly at how we use our planning department resources. Because I'd argue that we have got a shortage of resource in the planning department, but we have got a shortage on this.
If we, I mean, if we're reckless, if we held the balance of power, yes, of course, we'd put the post back. On the other hand, I would really point out that actually I think Cambridge City Council is now a completely ludicrous and duffing body. We need a unitary authority to actually cover the south of the county. That would allow lots of integration in all sorts of areas. It would actually save quite a lot of money and it would make considerably more sense. I had a wonderful moment last year when I was sitting in the lobby of the Guildhall, and fifty per cent of the phone calls that were coming into the Guildhall switchboard actually were directed towards the county council. Nobody knows what's going on, we need one council. And in terms of cycling, let alone everything else, that would make so much more sense.
I think that neatly brings us on to the next question.
Surely, sorry, could I specifically follow up on this? Because I'm very strongly against this issue. Very quick question, I mean. We specifically raised this question of reinstating the cycling officer in the last questionnaire that we did. And I'd just like to see clarification, if possible, from Lewis. Because in the previous two years, you did explicitly say you would reinstate that. And we are very concerned about the number of developments going through the system that where the county council really hasn't looked at things properly and where the city council's, you know, emphasis, which is naturally different to counties, is effectively not really being taken into account at the city level. So I really would welcome clarification as to whether that's sort of riding back a bit on their commitment or what the position is now of this, if you will.
Well, we haven't, we've been open, both in a budget amendment that we put forward early in the year and in the manifesto. I think the commitment is that, is based on the fact that we look at the fact that we've got a really good part-time officer, and then we've got to look at what are the gaps. We will, there will be a review. There are reviews going to be underway simply because the city council has to balance its books. But the big opportunity which will come forward is that it's, we are not going to suddenly have a single council, but we do need to have a single planning and transport team. And we cannot manage what are massively complicated and large sums of city deal money without integrating on transport. Our view is there's no point in us suddenly creating an extra post when we've got a half-time person who's doing a really good job and we're about to reorganise and integrate. We're not going to get Simon's dream, albeit that it's our objective as well. But we do need to have a single team. We have got some high-quality people, including the head of planning at the city council. There are some good transport people, but at the moment, people are just wasting their energy batting stuff around. I'm sorry if I go on a little bit, but one point I will make is, we've got a public examination at which the cycling campaign will make a major contribution to, of two city plans, a city and the South Cambs Plan. We've got a separate transport strategy. There has to be a single delivery plan. They're just, I don't think the actual issue about bodies in positions is the key issue. It is partly Simon's issue. It's a mess at the moment. And unless, we do have to have a single delivery plan linking the plans and transport strategy. It sounds a process geek response, but at the moment, things are just not being done right. And that roots, getting the right changes that there might be to improve the plans, that's what has to take priority, Martin.
Thank you. Now, I would like at this point to welcome another speaker to the stage. Anthony Carpen, and he's standing as Puffles the Dragon Fairy in Coleridge as an independent. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you very much. Apologies for being late, everyone. Me and Puffles were actually at the Dowding Collective Choir scene with about a hundred and fifty other people just around the corner. And we've got a big performance on Parker's piece at the weekend, so it's, things kicking off. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Anthony, and Cambridge is my hometown. Born and brought up here, went to school here, and with the exception of university and a few years in the civil service down in London. Cambridge is home and is the only place I've called home. I'm not actually standing against Lewis, even though the ballot paper says I'm standing against Lewis, because me and Puffles are running a campaign where we actually don't want people to vote for us. We're actually sort of having fun with the system to raise awareness of a whole series of issues of which the likes of Lewis can then take forward and run with. So sort of what we're trying to do in a very friendly and cuddly ways to influence Lewis and persuade his colleagues of the merits of, for example, reaching out to young people, and for example, how to get the best out of using social and digital media that can help organisations such as the Cambridge Cycle Campaign help scrutinise and improve a lot of the plans that are going on. The reason why this is important, because I've spent seven years in the civil service, five of which were in Whitewood, the Department for Communities and Local Government, and a lot of the problems that Lewis has rightly spoken about, I saw where they came from at a central government level. So one of the things that I've been doing over the past few years, sort of through Lewis and colleagues' puddles, so through the following Puffles has on Twitter, twenty members of the parliament follow Puffles the Dragon Fairy on Twitter, including your Shadow Rail Minister, who came over for tea and cake in her last visit, is to see how we can get on individual party manifestos, in particular for the 2015 general election, certain commitments, in particular things that will benefit Cambridge. Now, Ed Miliband, who was in Cambridge his last but one visit, I mean, not the recent one, but the one before that, we very kindly asked Lewis if they could, if Labour and also the Lib Dems could have little clauses in their county council manifestos to say, "We will back the Oxford to Cambridge railway, the reopening of that line." Ed Miliband rocks up, me and Puffles ask him, "Ed, it says in your local manifesto that you will back, Labour will back, the Oxford to Cambridge railway reopening. Will you back them at a national level?" Now, in front of one hundred people and all the press there, Ed Miliband's not going to say no. The reason why that was significant was because that was one of the first major spending commitments that Ed Miliband had made. The other person who follows Puffles on Twitter is the Director of Rail at the Department for Transport. You see, she found out what Puffles had been up to. Six months later, the coalition announces that they are providing funding for that final segment. So, yeah, was it Anthony Puffles? No, it probably wasn't. But my point being is that there are ways that I think someone like myself and through Puffles can work with politicians of whichever party, because I've worked with ministers of all three of the main parties, can work together actually for a better city because Cambridge, I believe, has the potential to be greater in some of its parts. But the structures we have at the moment are currently preventing us, and me and Puffles want to change that. Thank you.
Well, I think I will go back to a question, or raise a question that's been put to me, which does relate to what has been said very recently. What are your thoughts on one council for Greater Cambridge? Lewis has already sort of mentioned this, and I think Simon as well, Rod. Have you got any views on Greater Cambridge, having one council?
Yeah, I mean, I think in terms of the way in which Cambridge is growing, a unity authority, unitary authority, is clearly something which is for the benefit of the city in the medium-long term. I think the current structures that are in place and the proposed structures that are part of the city deal and so forth go some way to meet that, but they still don't give the clarity that such a structure would do. In reality, in order to create that unitary entity, you have to be prepared for all politicians to be prepared to participate. And that is the stumbling block at the moment. That whilst we may say, here in the city, that's something we aspire to, other politicians outside the city don't have that same gift. And I think that's the challenge in terms of convincing those other political, other politicians and other political parties outside the city that it's in their interest as well as ours to create that structure.
Yeah, I've stated on my blog post that I would like to see a unitary authority in Cambridge. The problem is, and I saw this inside the civil service, is trying to get the relevant legislation through Parliament to allow for that. Now, one of the lessons learned, I think in particular for the National Labour Party, so Lewis, I'm not pointing my finger at you personally here, is the lessons learnt over Exeter and Norwich, where the civil service looked at the proposals for making those two unitary authorities and actually had to advise the Public Council Committee to say the proposals that were coming forward from ministers did not give value for money. And as a result, John Denham, the then Secretary of State, had to give a ministerial direction to civil servants to proceed. Now, when the coalition then came in, they subsequently just got rid of it and said this was a bad idea. So, yes, let's go ahead with the unitary authorities, but let's make sure, kind of at a national level, we've learnt the lessons of what went wrong with Exeter and Norwich.
Thank you. I've just received another question on a slightly different topic, but very specific to a certain area which you may or may not have intimate knowledge of. But it does relate to the Chesterton New Station. The city council owns properties on the Nutfield Road trading estate. Will you support building an access from Milton Road using about two hundred and fifty metres of busway? That is to support getting, that the Nutfield Road trading estate should be able to exit pretty well directly onto Milton Road without having to come down Nutfield Road, then go up Greenlet Road.
Can I just ask a clarification? Is this to block off that other exit?
Yes, part of the way, yes.
Yeah, yeah. I'm very supportive of that, because I think, when I was Executive Councilor a year or so ago, we met and talked about that. I think it's a very sensible idea, basically, and I think the city council is supportive of that. I think some of the issues are around the county and how that function will work and the timing, but I think it's a very sensible solution, actually. Both for local residents and most probably for the traders who are actually on the estate.
Yes.
I mean, I am not intimate with parts of the geography, but I know that there's very poor cycling, walking, all sorts of links between Chesterton and King's Hedges and the railway line. So I think there are some big issues that where transport is the most important part. The, we started a point of weakness because there isn't a sort of area plan. The council didn't fully respect the station area development framework, but there does need to be a clearer framework for that whole area. The city council only owns, it owns chunks of land, and they're not small. It owns the Gulf Range and where Stagecoach is. They're big chunks, but they're erratic chunks. And city councils are generally not very good at taking power and shaping development. It tends to be the profit-making developers that are quickest at the games. I mean, I think we've got to invest more of our money in property and use property more as a limbo. And that can then free up the part of the land to improve the through route.
In spite of being what the Cambridge City News used to refer to 20 years ago as the council's property supremo, I'm not prepared to comment off the top of my head. No, fuck all about it.
Which is a rare political response.
Do you know Nutfield Road and the trading estate?
Not since I was very, very ill, but I think there are a number of principles that are really worth, I guess, stating here, and this is basically, will it, you know, will it reduce, for example, the amount of traffic and footflow that might go through residential areas? Will it reduce the amount of congestion? Will it actually reduce journey times? And will it increase the, if I can call it the transport shift from, you know, if I can call it hydrocarbon-based transport to one that's much more sustainable? And if those are the cases, then, you know, in principle, yes. But, you know, my neighbourhood, if I can put it, is kind of the borders between South Coleridge and North Queenie, that's really on the other side of town and out of the exact geography.
Yes, thank you. Now,快速
The petition is pending for another three weeks. If you haven't signed it, please, before you leave, it's cheap.
The petition that is asking for this new road from the trading estate into Milton Road. No further comments on that. I'll go on to the next question. How can we avoid the new developments making conditions worse for cyclists? The new junctions proposed for Huntingdon Road and Maddingay Road risk undermining the cycling schemes there, but with much less consultation going on. And I believe that there's a problem also in Long Road with Great Knighton, that the junction there is very hostile to cyclists. I haven't actually signed down there recently.
I raise this question, I think the point runs so much to details, is that if you compare the huge amount of consultations being taken place on, for example, the schemes for Huntingdon Road, Hills Road, and Trumpington Road at the moment, you know, for several cycle lanes, and you compare that with an almost negligible consultation that's been on the Wapping Gray Junction that's going to be placed halfway along Huntingdon Road that may well destroy that scheme, which is just basically comes as arrived as a planning application and no real major consultation other than that. How can we stop these sort of almost stealth schemes that have been produced by the developers that just undermine everything else the council is doing?
Yeah.
I'm half tempted to go down the Simon route, but I won't. I'm in the
I'm in the new, sorry, the point of the new developments is this is very much at the council's power.
The one that's nearest in my face and James sees it is the way the Markers marginally made a junction worse on that Hills Road Cherry Hinton one. But I think the overall issue is transport assessment and the way that it's done by the county council. So the new national planning policy framework says that there has to be significant detriment not to allow a development which adds a new junction or adds to the carriageway. But the, I guess, part of the resource issue is, how much resource does the county council have to do transport assessment properly? And at what level does it argue about a new junction? I mean, we basically, over the last 10 years, we've just added more and more car-based junctions into the city. And it's partly the city council's responsibility on planning. But, so I'm not answering your point effectively enough, but I just know that the way that the lack of integration between the local plan and the transport assessment is inadequate. And we have made various wording amendments as a Labour group to the local plan with the support of the Liberal Democrats, and it has chiselled improvements, but it's not sorting it out. I think we probably need to press the county council to have a real inquiry into how it does transport assessment. It needs to be a very public view about how's it resourced? Because just on issues on the Mark Junction with Hills Road Cherry to Road, we have just not been listened to. And we still, it's a small issue, but we have a crazy red set of arrangements of taking a cycle lane through what is continuously congested cars. It isn't in use, it never would work. We've also got cyclists now put onto a pavement, which then comes in at right angles into a junction. And all of that was assessed as being acceptable and some kind of improvement. And so the transport assessment doesn't work.
Anthony?
Yeah, on the Hills Road Cherry Hinton Road junction, I used to do a paper on down that road, and it was a death trap when I was 13, and it is still a death trap now. But rather than looking at the micro things here, for all of the meetings me and Puffles have been, the great thing about being the dragon fairy is that Puffles can fly up high and take a dragon's eye view and look down at the big picture in a way humans can't. And the point there being is that there are some really big picture problems happening at a national level, where the symptoms are being played out at a local level. And that includes the resourcing of local councils, as well as just what the overall structure should be. And so this is where I want to lean on the mainstream political parties to say, "Actually, let's look at the themes that seem to be cropping up time and again. Look at what the barriers are that are cropping up time and again, and then ask ourselves, actually, what are the pieces of legislation that we need, or the changes in the law that will actually allow us to stop these things from happening in the first place?" Because, you know, when you don't see positive change, or rather, when you see negative change, in particular from what I've seen up around that Hills Road junction, and I used to go to Tickford College there, and what it looks like now compared to what it was when I was doing A-levels there, massive, massive change. But, you know, personally, I think the architects and the developers of the leisure park and those hideous high-rise blocks should be fed to this one's friends. But the point being, and I've actually put this in my living manifesto, theme number five, is about saying, "Let's have some civic responsibility from the developers and from the large local institutions, and let's have that as a theme, and get that written into, for example, individual planning applications, or say to developers, 'You need to be aware of this, this is the framework of some of the things that we will be judging, and we, the local people, will be judging our applications on.'"
Thank you. Al, you had a question?
Yeah, I think with the specific ones that have been raised about Huntingdon Road and Maddingay Road and Long Road, as far as I can tell, one of the issues has been that these junctions have been included in massive planning applications, say for the North West Cambridge or for Great Knighton. And it's not been something that the application can be turned down on just because the junction's poor. There needs to be a way of approving the main development and then telling them, "But not that junction. Go away, come back with a separate consulting on plan for this junction. You can still go ahead and build the houses, but you're going to have to come back with something completely separate."
Martin, you've already had a question.
Well, I just, like, I mean, the two examples that have been given, namely Huntingdon Road and Cherry Hinton Road, are absolutely classic examples of why a cycling officer is needed in the city council. That what, you know, the response to the county council has been completely inadequate in these examples, and it's really necessary that the city council can actually properly look at these. Existing offices are completely overloaded, you know, 0.6 people, it's absolutely nothing to do with this. And there's a massive difference between Section 106 schemes, where there's no consultation whatsoever, compared to the Old Area Joint Committee, that would spend half an hour debating a bollard, you know, in the middle of nowhere. And one councillor said to me, often, the first time I ever heard of any of these developer-led changes to the public highway was when it actually appeared on the street. So I think, and we raise this in the local plan, so I think there's a big issue there, but I think these are really classic examples of the need for a cycling officer.
Simon, you had a point too.
Yeah, I don't think the points that are being made at the moment are a classic example of why actually we shouldn't have two councils. Because the moment you actually have two councils arguing the toss with inadequate resources, you actually have a guarantee that there will be inertia and things will go wrong, and they will be, you know, not what people want, and they'll take far too long, and so on and so forth. And I know it's a bit of a pipe dream that we have yet another local government reorganisation. I mean, I have the scars of my back from trying to get Cambridge to the Unitary Authority back in the 90s. But that's the only way we're actually going to get, you know, real progress in an awful lot of things to do with transport, which is classically something that goes across municipal boundaries, let alone an awful lot of other planning issues. And also the way in which we can actually have resources, in which we won't have half a person trying to do a huge job, rather than a couple of people doing what will still be a huge job. The other thing I'd say is that one does need to worry about the county council, because they are members who are officer-led. And as far as traffic engineering is concerned, they listen to the officers. And I regret to say, the vast majority of them, as I've said before, think, you know, "Two wheels good, four wheels better." They will squeeze actually cyclists in as far as they can, but they won't actually make them our priority. And if we don't tackle that, we're actually not going to be getting what we really need as far as a decent traffic infrastructure in this city is concerned.
James, you've been waiting for a while.
Section 106, Martin mentioned section 106. Section 106 and various future developments are, I mean, it will still persist in some form or other. At the example that we've been talking about, the Cherry Hinton Road Hills Road junction, that the building there, which is in Coleridge Ward, generated massive amounts of Section 106 money. There's no democratic accountability. We must have public contexts in which it's possible for members of the public to actually have some, be consulted in some way about the massive amounts of money that are generated by big buildings, like the new building at Cherry Hinton Road Hills Road Junction.
Thank you, Rod.
I was just going to come back to the main question, which is, and my experience and visibility is mostly on the North West Cambridge side, which is the Huntingdon Road and Maddingay Road junctions. And, you know, it's three local authorities there, it's not two, because you've got Southcamps, you've got ours, and you've got the county. You've got a very sophisticated developer, the university, who has a somewhat, how shall I put it, Jekyll and Hyde character. You know, they play the game like a very sophisticated commercial developer, but have a very, like, user-friendly veneer that they put over. And I think the gentleman in the second row with glasses, who said the idea of uncoupling some of these very detailed issues, so that we don't get steamrolled into signing off the whole thing. Because we're up against a dynamic where the university or the developer is threatening us in terms of taking us to the inspector. So that you can actually step back, and once you've agreed the overall application, you can come back and look at some of these fine details so that we can get it right. Because again, that's a major development, it's most probably in the region of 3,000, 5,000 dwellings, and that's going to be an awful lot of people coming onto those two roads, and we're hoping a lot of them are going to be cyclists. So we need to get it right for them at those junctions. I don't have an answer, but I think actually we should be stepping back on those specific issues so that we do get it right.
Simon, you would like to lead the
Yeah, I'm afraid, having only just got back to Cambridge from holiday late this, just before the meeting, I really feel that I ought to go and check the files.
Thank you very much for coming.
Very few people will excuse me, I think, you know. I'm sure I've lasted you long enough, so I will leave it to these wonderful people and bugger off. Right, okay, cheers.
Thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, one of the things with Puffles that we're running on it, we're probably the only people who are targeting the votes of people who don't actually have the votes. What I mean by that is, we're encouraging undererrings to get involved in local democracy. Just because they don't have the vote doesn't mean they don't have a voice. Hence why we're trying to run with something on social media. And it really matters in our ward of Coleridge, and Lewis has managed to somehow change the culture of the, or help change the culture of the council by basically saying the city council actually needs to better understand the needs of teenagers. This matters in Coleridge, because we have two secondary schools there. We have one primary school inside and two on the boards, and I'm the governor of one of them. So one of the things that I particularly want to see is young people much more involved in, in particular, the work that you do with the Cambridge Cycling Campaign. When I was at secondary school, we didn't know about your cycling campaign, even though I cycled to school every day to Netherpool. I would love to see representation in every single secondary school, for example, of your campaign, just simply because of the number of people cycling there. Furthermore, I think then that might help encourage people to actually take an interest in the planning applications that come through. I've got a big moment about Cambridge University, because I don't think they're behaving, them and their colleges are behaving as civically responsible as they could be. Hence why I put it in my manifesto that I want to see them signing up at board level on some principles of civic responsibility, where they are looking after their neighbours, i.e. you and I who live there. I never studied at Cambridge, this is just my hometown. Where they're looking after us, the residents, as well as looking out for their big business portfolios and their students. And then finally, I want to really question, really the developers on this, and ask whether we can pilot a process of citizens being involved in developments at design stage. Because, for example, with the Belvedere and the Marquee Development in Cambridge Leisure Park, you know, I only knew about it once the building work had started. So is there a better way, for example, that developers can reach out to citizens and say, "Look", for example, with the Ramsay Labour Club, they've already started at that design stage. Can we do more at design stage involving local residents at an earlier stage, rather than saying, "Here's a planning application, take it or leave it. And if you don't like it, we will take you to the planning inspectorate and you'll deliver the cost."
Thank you. Robbie?
I have a very simple point. We're in a city where 58% of people cycle at least once a month. We have 30% of people who cycle to work every month who are going through these junctions. Every single traffic assessment I've seen for all of these junctions, or all these planning applications, say, "This is the number of cars we're going to have." There's no mention of cycles. They're not designing the junctions for 30% of people on two wheels. That's what we need to change. We should not allow any planning application that does a traffic assessment that does not take into account cyclists in a cycling city.
Okay, so possibly you can go further and actually say, can they give an assessment of their developments where cyclists actually have the priority of the road?
Irrespective of how much resource there might be in the city deal, this is a big issue. Irrespective of how much resource there might be in the city, this is a big issue. I mean, basically, you're right to say, despite your best efforts, that we are, as councils, continuing to commit new junctions and changes that actually take us five steps backwards. So irrespective of how much resource there is, this is a fundamental issue. I do say some of it is just the way that the county council does it. Some of it is hamstrung by legislation, but it isn't prevented from them doing it in a different way. And I think, A, I think Simon did hit the point that it is four wheels is better from a number of perspectives in the way that their whole thought processes work. It's what's driving many of the developers. And I just think there has to be a dialogue which you can be a big part of that changes the way transport assessment is done.
A quick comment?
Yes, this is a subsidiary point because how can we get the developers to not treat their development as completely ring-fest? Because the problem with the junctions is that they make a wonderful network of cycle routes and they think, oh, well, there's a junction. And they seem to forget that their development needs to be integrated with the roads around. I mean, the North West Cambridge site is an example. I mean, I haven't looked at it in great detail, but I know the university is saying an awful lot of the right things about encouraging cycling within the development. But first of all, during the construction work, they've completely messed up the junction at the Madigley Road parking ground, which is an absolute nightmare on both a bicycle or in a car at the moment, as far as I can tell. And it's almost that when they're doing their plans, they're not thinking about how their beautiful, cycle-friendly development relates to the roads around. I'm not sure what the answer is. I mean, I think part of the answer is the things we've said before about more resource in the city council to limit these matters to proper transport assessments.
I mean, I think you raise a very valid point. I mean, I don't think it's just about assessments, it's about having the leverage with those developers. For example, at the university, we're still to deliver the West Cambridge cycle route, safe cycle route for cyclists from the West Cambridge side over down into Silver Street into the Historic Court. Now, that's a scheme which was under developer contributions about eight or nine years ago. And we're still debating with the university in terms of a route which is acceptable to cycle users, which doesn't basically, you know, take you down Borough Way, sorry, and over Garrett Hostel Bridge. And that's an illustration of where the ability for us to have levers with the university in this particular case is very restrained, very constrained. So what I would like to see is our ability to have much more leverage with those developers around section 106 contributions and have much more of a carrot and stick approach so that they can't actually affect the development until these specific details are signed off. And that will actually enable us to get the solution correct, not just for now, but for the future. For example, I think the Madigley Road junction is a very interesting one because actually the university is saying that's going to link up North West Cambridge to the West Cambridge side and then on to the section 106 cycle route into the Historic Court. And all those things are supposed to all link together, but actually there hasn't been much in terms of the detailed discussion of how that will work.
And that's what's needed, it's the attention to the detail that they fall down on.
One thing that hasn't been really mentioned, I just wonder how much the council and councillors run scared of the Cambridge News, which seems to be in the pocket of the car lobby, with all the supplements about cars that it runs and all the comments and the sorts of letters that it prints. And I wonder how scared you all are about the Cambridge News and that sort of car. I mean, is that why junctions, you know, are always so...
I think the bigger issue is the hardball with developments when they occur at the time. And I think the only example, I know, I, we're all multi-mode, or a lot of people are, depending on what the journeys are. But I think the, I think the only example I can think of where the developer didn't get their own way, or their own evil way, was Bebrum Road, where development has never happened. Where, where basically the developer couldn't come forward with a transport solution that created an acceptable route. And we have got inherited from the last 10 years too many bad impacts in that there was no sustainability in the transport modes in a number of plans. And we just have these sequence of congested junctions creating dangers for cyclists and pedestrians as well as, they're not exactly nice to the cars. I mean, if you actually ask the car drivers about what has happened, they're not happy bunnies either, but their lives are not as affected as some of the local communities and some of the pedestrians and some of the cyclists.
Can I, can I just say that it's not just new developments either, it's existing junctions? And I think some of the issue, I mean, my experience of trying to get the Newham Road-Barton Road junction looked at by the county is an illustration in point. I mean firstly, you have the system now where, well firstly, they started saying there is no problem because we fixed it in the mid 90s, so there is no problem. Everybody uses it really well. And we did, I did an informal survey just of non-motors using that junction. And the volume of cyclists and pedestrians in all directions is materially different from what the county thought. Then you have to go through this crazy system where you slight Dragon's Den, you bid to be a scheme just to get the feasibility money to look at the project. I mean, it's ridiculous. And I think Lewis's point around the county is a very valid one. I think that they really need to look at how they manage the transport infrastructure and the assessment in that. Not just on the new developments, but on some of the existing junctions as well. And that would go a long way to try and actually improve those junctions, actually. I'm sure you experienced it with the same frustration with some of your involvement with the county council.
I wanted to point you slightly off the junction, or off where the developments meet, developments meet the main roads, to go off that and a bit more to the core competency of the city council. So we'll have tens of thousands of additional residents in the coming years. You have the councils for a while, and all the developments in Cambridge that you and your colleagues have approved over the past five years, as far as I can tell, prioritise car parking, convenient car parking still right in front of the doorstep, and build bike storage. Cambridge standards for bike storage are better than most other places in the UK, but they tend to be at the rear end of the garage or they tend to be away. They're considered really bike storage. And it's still not as convenient to get up your bike as walk off your house, open the car as much as you can, drive off. The car should be away, it should be centrally parked somewhere, just as far away as a bus stop. Because if it is more convenient to take your car right in front of your house rather than walk to bus stop, you will never use the bus and you will not use the car either. So why have you always prioritised, you and your colleagues always prioritised, convenient car parking right in front of the doorstep rather than having it be mode centralised and get the cars off the residential new developments?
I suppose the thing is, it's the developers who put in the plans, isn't it?
No, not necessarily. I have spoken to the developers, I've said, no, the city council didn't want this, they want the cars right in front of the house.
We have a planning system which allows a developer really to only look at how they impact on that point where they join to the system. I mean, the cycling campaign's right to say that there should be a vision of a different type of Cambridge. But we haven't had that in a plan, which is, and it isn't in the new plan, to say we are going to have sort of resident zones and, I mean, if we started using, having more parking rides, they could be places where people have their cars. But that isn't the way that we built.
It's impossible, my nearest bus stop is 1.2 kilometres walk away. My car is right in front of the door.
But I think for half of the city and for quite a lot of the new developments, it isn't simple to get to your car. It isn't like, I mean, well, I mean, I live in inner Cambridge in Coleridge and most of the cars are some distance away from, I mean...
Yeah, but the new development's not.
But even with the big intensive developments, all right, some of them have got underground car parks, but a number of them have got effectively, they've dispersed their cars into the community. So, I mean, the intensity of development has actually displaced cars out of developments. Because it's simply the way that a lot of development has occurred in this city and has done that. But the, so we probably haven't had a clear enough plan to sort of give the priority to the non-car in the way that developments have been designed. But that, a lot of that is financial pressure from developers. And it's hardball standing up to developers, particularly with a planning framework that favors development.
Thank you. Anthony, you ought to...
I was going to say, you should try standing up to the developers when you're sat next to a minister, it's just as hard. I used to work in housing policy under the previous administration and the amount of power and influence that developers have just frightens the life out of me, it really does. And I can see why councils, local authorities are really struggling in the face of such powerful interests. One of the things that seems to be coming back quite a lot is about the systems and the processes. And the systems and processes not really working. I almost put myself back into the position of being a 17, 18-year-old growing up here. And I can imagine, you know, myself coming into a discussion or a debate like this and thinking this is, the detail of this is, would really be going over my head. But how can I really make a difference to, you know, to my city? And this is where, with discussions with several other people, councillor Havert included, we've come up with the idea of a series of community action summits, which is basically where we put all, we get dozens and dozens of people who actually want to make a real positive difference to the city. And we thrash out the real problems. So we, for example, we'd list all the problems and we say, right, let's have some workshops where we're really fleshing these out. And then have some after doing workshops where we can start thinking about actually what are the solutions to these. Just want to pick up on a point that councillor Cantor made with Cambridge County Council talking about, this is what they need to do. And it strikes me that transparency is an issue here. The transparency in terms of the conversations that the councils have with developers at those early stages. Who said what with what development in terms of what a junction should look like? I also want to just finally finish this comment with, I think it was the former mayor of Bocatar in Columbia who said the developed city is one where the rich use of public transport as well as everybody else, not where everybody uses a car. I passed my driving test in Cambridge in November 1997, haven't driven a car since.
Now, I'm proposing that this part of discussion shall finish at 10 to 10. Then that will just give an opportunity for any business that the cycling campaign would like to bring up. I think we probably ought to have a very brief report on the Reach Fair that happened yesterday. So five minutes and shall we go to a new question? Or, Jim, yes?
Yeah, this is really a follow-up of the previous one, really. In, I mean, before all the fringe developments in Cambridge started, a team of councillors and officers went to Freiburg. And Freiburg, Simon's not here, but it was Freiburg, it was all part of the wins. But in Freiburg, for instance, one of the developments which officers and councillors looked at has, A, has a monster on the car park for its car park, there are no cars by the houses. And B, before, one of their conditions was that before the first house was occupied, the cab was running. And I feel that we are learning the lessons from our European neighbours and the way that they've done things. And I wonder why, given the fact that officers and councillors went to places like that, we don't seem to manage to import any of those things.
Anthony's got to stand up and then, Rod.
Yeah, ten years ago, I went to a conference in Germany and I sorted the lights of the public transport system there. And at that conference, I said, how many of you want to come back to the UK and sort out our public transport system? Since then, one of the things I've noticed in Cambridge and particularly in my school is that we've got quite a lot of people from Germany with children at our schools, which has exploded because it means that there is a lot of untapped expertise from people coming from other countries to Cambridge that I don't feel that we as a city are, you know, are really tapping into. And I think that there is a lot of experience of residents living in this city who have come from other countries, who have seen and know how to do things better. And one of the things I want to explore in particular for the next few years is just how we can get new residents coming into the city involved in actually making Cambridge a better place, because at the moment something's not working.
Rod, and then actually, I'm not going to take any more questions, I think we should sort of wrap it up.
I think, Jimmy, you raise a very valid point. I think part of the issue is the macro dynamics that the, all the authorities locally have been in in relation to deliver housing. And I think that pressure from, which has come down from national government, has forced rapid decisions. I think, to be fair, the local authorities started off with very good intentions in terms of looking at these fringe developments and how we could deliver them in a different way. And unfortunately, I think that those good intentions got smothered by that desire from national government to get houses on the ground. And also, I think it relates to this point that was raised earlier about why are all, why so many of the properties still have some car dependency attached to them? And I think it does come to the point, it's very difficult to convince a resident not to use the car when you haven't got an appropriate level of infrastructure. As you said, in Germany, they put the trams in before you could sign off on the first dwelling. And that's not a condition that I see here in the UK anywhere. And I think unfortunately, we are now in catch-up because those developments are going on the ground and we now have some funding with the city deal. But we are in catch-up. And hopefully, we can correct some of the errors, but I'm not sure we can correct all of them. And it's a shame, it's a missed opportunity, I would accept that.
Thank you. Lewis, would you look back on the final word?
Well, I mean, I think clearly money will help, but I do think we focus on what is happening between planning and transport. I also come back without any particular agenda for the Ring Road because I personally think that having an informed and effective debate and looking at some completely different views of places like Mitcham's Corner or of the Elizabeth Way junction, of seeing the radials as limited access, but particularly public transport access coming in, plus obviously cycling and walking. And of just using that route of the next part of the onion around the core strategy is in the very limited situation that we find ourselves in, the best route to actually change the way the city works. And it isn't going to be simple. And there's bound to be lots of different angry views about how things might change. But I think, I never felt that the congestion charge was the right route. But I do feel that re-engineering quite a lot of Cambridge is the route to make it a better place for everybody who wants to get around the city, but also everybody who lives next to that, those places. I shudder at the thought of the damage to people's health on some of the routes and some of the places in the city. We are basically damaging a lot of people's health by the way that we are not sorting out these areas. It isn't a simple route, but I, in part, the reduction in the capacity of four-wheel vehicles to get through the inner part of Cambridge is to me the biggest way to actually make progress. It sounds negative, but it's one of the few tools that we really do have.
Thank you. I think you've made your point, Sarah Anthony, yes. So I'd like to thank our speakers very much for coming here this evening, spending so much time with us and discussing these topics with us. Especially at the time, as I've said earlier, when it is very busy for them, when they're electioneering. And I think we wish all the best of luck in the elections, whatever the outcomes may be.
We might see each other again, you'd have a none.
So, a big round of applause. A big round of applause and thank you very much.